Stand for the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the public which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Mayor Leahy.
Here.
Ms. Martin.
Here.
Ms. Clark.
Here.
Mr. Dakota.
Here.
Mr. Dillon.
Here.
Ms. Dougherty.
Here.
Ms. Delay.
Here.
Seven present.
Need a motion to approve the regular school, uh, regular scheduled and special meetings of the Lowell School Committee October 20th, 2021. Place them on file, motion by Councilor, uh, Councilor, School Committee Man Dillon, seconded by Mr. Dakota. Permission to enter, Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, the permissions for this, uh, this meeting are within the school committee's packet, staff is available for any questions.
Any questions on the, yeah. Did you want to go on the?
CTI.
Permission to enter. Need a motion to approve the permission to enter by Mr. Dillon, seconded by Ms. Clark. Roll call.
Mayor Leahy.
Yes.
Ms. Martin. Ms. Clark. Mr. Dakota.
Yes.
Mr. Dillon.
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty.
Yes.
Ms. Delay.
Yes.
Six present, one absent, approved.
Next we have memorials. We could have a moment of silence for Albert F. Lenzey, uncle of Mayor Leahy, uncle of Mayor Mary Jeffroy, Lowell High E House Administrative Assistant, Betty McCannon, Director of Adult Education, Kathleen Ramirez, Green Elks Teacher, grandfather of Jen Lenzey, LeBlanc School Administrative Assistant. If we could dim the lights. Next we have motions, first motion tonight by myself, request superintendent, um, collaborate and collaborate with the Facilities Department to repair the Riley School Fence, seconded by Mr. Dillon. I guess there is a report in here and it's already been, uh, done, so it's on the schedule to get fixed, so, uh, thank you. What's that? All right. Next, subcommittees, seven one, School Committee, School Improvement and Performance Management Subcommittee Report, Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much, uh, the Subcommittee did meet, um, in attendance were myself, also members Mr. Dakota and Mr. Dillon, we also had Ms. Dougherty and, uh, Mr. Liam Skinner was, uh, presenting from the administration. We did review the key performance indicators for the 21-22 school year, um, this is again a kind of a listing of all the kind of key, uh, performance measures that we'll be watching over the course of the year in order to determine performance, um, I will say, you know, at the meeting and the materials are included in the packet that go through all the listings, uh, committee members did have some questions, um, wanting to, uh, add in some measures around the, uh, performance at the Family Resource Center, um, we also discussed adding on some measures regarding the AP performance for students at the high school, uh, I think as we go through, um, again, I won't go through each one of the individual ones, uh, but we do have academic achievement, the safe and welcoming environment, operational goals, as well as community engagement goals, so they do mirror the overall kind of goal structure that we have in place for, uh, the district, uh, and we'll be looking to get our first report, Mr. Skinner. When, when will that come in?
I presume that will be early December, uh, shortly after the end of the first quarter.
So we'll all be looking forward to that, so I would submit that as a report of progress for all my colleagues who are in attendance, please feel free to, to add any of the details you feel I've missed.
Any questions on the report? Sure, Ms. Dougherty?
Thank you, we did have a number of things we discussed, um, so will there be, uh, changes based on those discussions, you know, as Ms. Martin had mentioned, things about student performance, operational efficiency, and looking at, you know, really setting a baseline and then measurable, um, achievement level, so I'm just wondering if there's going to be another iteration of this that we're going to see, or we'll just see what comes out in early December after the first quarter.
So, so far I've reviewed the feedback from the committee with other members of Central Office and also with the, um, the Data Office, we're looking to expand, for instance, one of the requests was for trend data, we certainly will provide that trend data if we have it, um, so the KPIs are relatively new, um, structure and a relatively new report out to the committee, I think it began last year, so we may not have trend data that goes back several years or that would make that useful, but where we have it, we will add it, uh, there were some other follow-ups, um, for example, there was a discussion about the, um, advanced placement courses and report outs on students that are achieving at a very high level, um, I learned that there is a report out on advanced placement courses, I believe it's actually been given to the committee in the past, we'll resurrect that, that would be in the summertime, so yes, there's follow-through based on your, um, on your comments and, and, and requests where we're able to provide for that.
Awesome. Need a motion to accept the report, reported progress by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Dillon. All those in favor? Next we have reports of Superintendent, COVID-19 update, Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, Dr. Hall will share with the committee the update on COVID-19 data for this month, uh, oh, Mr. Skinner, if you can pass the remote, not the microphone, the remote, thank you, sir. So it's a brief side deck, following the standard procedure of our report out on COVID-19 and, uh, then staff is available for questions, Dr. Uh, Dr. Hall?
Just press your button. Yep, I'm sorry, we've updated the data again, um, from the last school committee meeting, I'd like to point out, out up front that there's a discrepancy, when we were transferring data, we somehow inadvertently left out the Lincoln School, which should have reported that they had three positives over the last reporting period, but, uh, tomorrow we're going to update the website again and that will accurately be in the chart, um, so let me go through some of the numbers here, so here, here are all the schools, uh, we've compiled everything from August 29th up to the day of the report, and also you can see, um, the last week report as well, and the Lincoln was inadvertently left out, I apologize for that, but it will be updated tomorrow. As we went over at the last meeting, test and stay has, um, provided a lot of great dividends, um, after a close contact, uh, we're testing up to five days after that to see if, uh, anyone else is positive, uh, but this has been great to allow students to continue to learn. And here are testing, uh, numbers. And additionally, we're also tracking the number of, uh, participants, uh, as you can see, there's about 21.3% of students participating, uh, staff participation went up slightly at almost 25%, and as we went over at the last meeting, um, we do get more and more consents, once there is the risk of not being able to stay at school, um, we get consent so they can, uh, continue to stay in school with, uh, test and stay. So, subject to your questions, that's the end of my presentation.
Any questions on the report? Sure, Ms. Dougherty?
Uh, thank you, Honors, so I'm just wondering, how effective is the testing when we have such low numbers, uh, percent, and I know that when a child is, has a first exposure, a close contact exposure, uh, then the families might be more prone to have them tested because they can test and stay, but still the numbers are relatively low, and I'm just wondering how effective the testing is, if only, what was it, 17% or 20%? It's a small number, right, I don't have the, the report came off the screen, so, I don't know if you had any thoughts on that?
Sure, I did, uh, look at that, Ms. Dougherty, it's, um, it is an interesting point, I do think that the approximately, uh, 20% of the students that are participating does show, uh, whether or not there's strong evidence of COVID or not within a classroom, and diving deeper into the data, I think you might have noticed this too, the daily has, um, very significant, um, participation, and it looks like almost, uh, double or triple of some other schools, but if you extrapolate their positive numbers out for the lower participating schools, it does look like the percentage of positives are, uh, tracking, and again, that's only one outlier, uh, that we're looking, but I think that's some sort of evidence that if you get even 10 to 20% of the participants, you can show, uh, whether or not there's a high prevalence rate or not, but yes, we would, uh, encourage a lot more people to participate, it would definitely, um, make things a lot easier, um, and help us with test and stay, but I do think 20% definitely makes it worth it to continue, uh, but we do hope to get more and more people participating.
Can I just ask one more follow-up, so, when a student or a staff member is identified as close contact with somebody who is tested positive, and they get permission to be part of the testing in order to remain in school, that permission stays with the student even after the period of test and stay has passed? We, we only need permission once, right?
Yes, one, consent, yes, well unless, unless they try to revoke it, so theoretically you could try to revoke your consent, which we would have to honor.
So we should see those percentages of students who are participating in the testing go up?
We should, gradually each week it should go up unless, um, students are absent for some other reason or don't participate.
Any other questions on the report? Next we have home education.
Thank you, this report is, uh, submitted to the committee, following standard protocol, uh, Ms. Desmond is available if there are any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Dillon?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I, sorry if this is really loud, um, I was wondering about, uh, when we post the names of, uh, homeschool students and, or families, is it required by law that we put their address?
Ms. Desmond?
Just seems, it just seems personal, I don't know, it kind of puts all these things out there in a way.
I will check on that, this is the standard way that has, it has been presented for years, um, I, I picked up on a standard format that had been in existence before I was here, this, these are not students, these are the, the actual adults who are taking responsibility for the homeschooling, um, but I do believe because they have to be residents of Lowell, um, that the address is required, but I will verify that and get back to you at the next meeting.
All right, thank you, cause I, I have received feedback from a couple people that just felt like it was, I don't know, just uncomfortable, uncomfortable having their address out there, I, I don't know, but I'd appreciate it if you look into it, thank you.
Thank you, anything else? All right, just before we go on, we need to, uh, have a motion to approve the home education by Ms. Dougherty, seconded by Ms. Delay, roll call.
Mayor Leahy.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Ms. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Dakota.
Yes.
Mr. Dillon.
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty.
Yes.
Ms. Delay.
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Next we have the response to the motion, um, by Ms. Dougherty, any questions on that? Any question, sure, Ms. Dougherty?
Uh, thank you, I, I appreciate the effort that's gone into this, um, I'm wondering, how many districts did we talk to about how they're doing it, cause I know there's been a couple of districts that have met that 80% threshold, and I know when I was speaking to, uh, one of the nurse managers, she said that they would be talking to other nurses in other districts, and so I'm just wondering how many other districts we reached out to, to kind of see how they came up with, because in order to get that 80%, uh, no mask threshold, you have to be able to verify, so, um, the surveys and anonymous polling won't get us to that point, so I'm just wondering, what was the methodology behind?
Sure, so I, I didn't, uh, call and ask anyone, Ms. Dougherty, I did research, um, other districts and look at potential survey means, but I, in looking at the, um, letter from, uh, that was attached, it doesn't, uh, seem to require, uh, the most statistically accurate, uh, proof to prove, uh, 80%, uh, so, once I looked at the other districts, I did talk, uh, to the, um, Ms. Keegan, uh, as instructed, uh, we went over various desires or suggestions, uh, I think what the city wanted us to do didn't really match the initial preliminary intent of the committee to try to keep it, uh, less intrusive in the preliminary stage, and then as the letter says, we looked at various, uh, ways to try to get as many people to respond as possible, now the telephone survey, um, looked favorable, but again, we would probably have the lowest response rate, and we really wouldn't know who was answering and whether or not they had, um, the real true information, but I think all of us would agree when you get someone calling you on the phone, even if it's a recording, we tend to not trust that as much, um, and then the email to the parents, uh, again, we'd, we'd be, um, fighting, uh, whether or not we had the most current email for every, uh, parent, and again, one parent may get to respond and the other parent may not get to respond, um, but ultimately we think the Survey Monkey procedure, uh, is the best, it certainly would be the best to collect staff information, however, we did run a sample, um, at Central Office, there were a few, uh, glitches that we learned, um, on how to better evolve this out at the schools, but we had approximately, uh, 50 to 55 responses, and we were about at a 88 to 90% vaccination rate for Central Office, but again, that was just staff, uh, members without, uh, students involved. Another wrinkle that's developing, I'm sure you all saw that the CDC is approving the five to 11-year-old vaccines, so DUCY did send out a letter on 28th October giving some preliminary guidance and anticipation of that vaccine coming out, um, I'm happy to report we've done a lot of, uh, the stuff in that letter, like coordinating with our COVID response, uh, director, having vaccine clinics, which our principals are doing a great job of setting up, uh, clinics in the middle school and the high school, um, with Ms. Keegan, so it appears, and they stressed in the letter that parents should, uh, look forward and try to talk to their pediatric primary care, uh, physician to get information, uh, so they'll be prepared in advance on what's best for their family, um, but it appears that we've been doing much of that stuff except, um, that primary care physician aspect, but there is going to be a letter going out to families, uh, providing more information on this, that's what DUCY's encouraged, and we're just awaiting, um, further guidance from them, which should be in any day now related to that. So, and again, this is a preliminary response just on how we intend to go about this survey, of course we'll come back with the survey information, um, but, uh, again, it'll be up in the air in regards to what our response rate is.
Sure, Mr. Dillon?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to, um, reiterate that I think it's completely ridiculous that we're asking this information, um, I don't think it's anybody's business, and, um, especially, you know, especially where it starts to put pressure on people to get the vaccination and give it to their children, and I just, um, don't want to be a part of, uh, any type of overreach like that, and, um, I disagree that we're even tracking it, thank you.
All right, anything else, I mean, I understand you disagree, but we are trying to get the masks off, right, so the, the point, Mr. Um, Hall is to get up to 80% and then masks can be taken off? Is that the goal?
If, if you're vaccinated, Mayor, so, if, I'm sure the committee saw this too, and the policy that I attached that the committee could vote on, it didn't necessarily say that Central Office, um, could participate in the exemption, I would like to read it, that the committee could vote, that we could forward Central Office in its application, but it didn't expressly say, um, school, uh, facilities that aren't schools within the letter.
Okay, um, Mr. Dillon, then Ms. Dougherty?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I understand that, you know, now, we're presenting this as a way to get masks off, but, um, if, has anybody asked where the 80% number comes from, I don't believe there's any, um, has really been any proof or any type of, I think the state or, you know, whoever just pulled it out of thin air, um, so, I don't, I don't see that 80% vaccination rate as something that we should be aiming for, don't, like, if you could, can understand, uh, like, this is a way to, um, push and pressure people to give their kids a vaccination, with this 80% goal, and now we can take our masks off, why don't we just take our masks off right now? I did, just take your mask off, nobody can tell you to wear a mask, just take your mask off. Is that an option? I, you know, I know nothing's going to happen in here, what?
No, but we're following the guidelines, I guess.
All right, thank you, that's all.
Ms. Dougherty?
Uh, thank you, I just think, um, in terms of what you're recommending, Dr. Hall, if I understand correctly, we'll do the Survey Monkey for staff, and it seems like it would be a good way to just get a basic measure, um, and it's not as difficult as trying to do all the students, but my understanding right now, the only students who would qualify would be 12 and older, cause that's the only ones who, so, maybe for just now, to do that, see what our staff numbers look like, I mean, I think the Central Office survey is very encouraging that we're up over 80%, um, and, so I, and it doesn't sound like that would be a huge amount of work to just put it out there and, and get a, a measure of where we stand with our staff, um, in terms of future, you know, polling and what the state requires, maybe we'll just put that aside for now and see where things go, but at least to get a, a handle of, of a baseline of what our, what our staff numbers look like, I think would be helpful, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else on the motion response? Need a motion to, uh, accept the reports from Superintendent 8183, reports of progress, motion by Mr. Dillon, seconded by Ms. Clark, communications? Yeah, all, all in favor, all in favor of the motion, say on, um, communications, 91, communications from the Office of Teaching and Learning regarding special education data. Ms. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, 9192 were requests of the committee, uh, for data in these, uh, described areas, 9.1, it has been submitted by Ms. Desmond, uh, she's available for questions, I believe, uh, I believe the memo and the data is self-explanatory, uh, but Ms. Desmond is available for any questions, uh, should the committee have any.
Sure, Ms. Martin?
If you could, Ms. Desmond, just give us the executive summary, please, thank you.
Um, so, uh, last meeting, um, you had requested, um, Committee Member Martin, so, an update on where we were with, uh, special education, so, uh, we actually track this data regularly and, and keep track of it, so I just wanted to put, um, a snapshot of where we are with our, so there's three components, um, to, uh, evaluations in our special education department, there is the, um, initial meetings where someone requests, uh, students to be evaluated to see if they qualify for some supports, uh, or an individual education plan, uh, once they qualify for an individual education plan, there's a, an annual review process, uh, and that happens annually at the time that they've qualified, so if someone qualifies today, next year they would, there would be an annual at this time, and then there's also a reevaluation, which happens every three years, and so this is a snapshot of where we are currently, um, in each of those areas, so, for example, if you look at the initial meetings where someone is requesting testing, um, there's currently 96 meetings in progress, and of those 96, 75 of them are completely in compliance, which means that we've received assigned consent, uh, testing is either Testing is either being complete or has been completed within the thirty school days, which is required. And then, the meeting is scheduled to be held during the eligible timelines, which is forty-five days. In progress means that part of it has started, but there could be something outstanding. So, we may be waiting for assigned consent to be able to move forward with testing. And then, you'll see the last column are meetings that are held up because of translation services. And we did just learn that the contract has gone through for translation services, and so that will be starting relatively soon. So, and then, as you look down, it's the same sort of process. So, if you look at the annual meetings, we have what is in compliance, which means it's either being completed, or it's on the timeline to be completed, and everything is in compliance. The in-process might be held up because we're waiting for an assigned consent from the families or something like that. And then, the final column is the translation pending column. And so, if anyone has any questions beyond that, I'm happy to answer them. I'd be happy to provide this data more regularly, if that is helpful. I do want to just say that we're very fortunate. All of our special education staff, our ETCs, our school psychologists, our BCPAs, everyone... be that it falls out of compliance, because, for example, if you look at the initial meeting one, the first grid, it's bulleted what, what things need to be in compliance. For example, you have to begin testing and have it completed within thirty school days of receiving the consent. The forty-five school days from the received consent is when you have to have that meeting scheduled and held. So, it could be that we miss a deadline because we're waiting for something, and so that's why it's in progress. So, I don't want to say for sure everything is out of compliance in this list, but we could end up with that if we don't get assigned consent in time or something like that. That's not atypical, though. That's something that happens as a part of this process. There, oftentimes, there is something that might, we might be waiting on before we can move forward. But if you look down at the bottom, you'll see that we've taken some action steps to make sure that we are in compliance. And one of those things, one of those bullet items is that we have a special education parent advocate that you all approved a few years ago, and our parent advocate has been calling families, she was calling them today, you know, following up on paperwork that might be missing, or how can we help you? So, we're trying to reach out as much as we can to families as well.
So, just to follow up on that, when you have the, let's say, the second, the current annual review, so we know that these meetings have to be held annually around the same time, when you had that list in compliance, the total is two-hundred-and-two that are in compliance, and out of that, a hundred-and-six are in process in some way, not in compliance? So, the hundred-and-six is out of the two-hundred-and-two? That's an additional. I get it. Okay.
And just to clarify, this number is constantly changing, because as of today, you know, this is as of October twenty-seventh, when I had gotten the numbers from our special education director. But today, there might be new annual reviews that are now up, because every day, it's sort of a new number, it could be a new number. So, I'd be happy to do a quarterly report, a monthly report, whatever the committee desires.
And I understand it's a moving target. It does change daily. And I guess, as Ms. Martin said, with if we had regular, because this seems very different than the data we got last time, which I don't have in front of me. But I think to be able to see progress in this, and it has, no way pointing fingers, it has been an ongoing issue to meet our, the mandated timeline requirements. My last question has really been a newer concern, and that's with the ones that are pending translation. So, we have a hundred-and-fifty-two was the total number, and I know by law, we are required to provide translation services for our families who need it. So, is it safe to say that a hundred-and-fifty-two are out of compliance because we don't have translation services?
I'd have to look at those that need translation services, and then what their timelines are. So, I don't, I don't know that. I don't know if we're, if we've passed the thirty days or the forty-five days, I'd have to look at that. But these, these are the numbers of existing meetings that are requiring translation right now, that haven't, that we haven't moved through the process. So, we have the contract now, so hopefully, we'll be able to move on that very quickly.
And thank you. And I know that the translation services comes into that number in the next report that has to do with the, the students who were enrolled and how that got delayed, because again, we didn't have translation services. And I know we are going to be meeting about the issue with the contracts and what happened that we lost the translation service we used to have, and the timelines that got involved with getting the new one. So, I'm not going to go into that now. We'll wait till we cover that at another point. But I do think it's important to recognize that translation services are, by law, something we need to provide for our parents. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Clark?
Thank you. I was going to ask some similar questions related to the translation services, and while I appreciate, we, we're planning to have another meeting. I know that meeting's actually been canceled twice, so I'm wondering if it would be possible to hear a little bit of detail about why the translation services have been delayed, and wondering if there have been any translation services provided this far this year?
Yes, Ms. Turner?
So, I can give an update as far as the contract, both contracts, the previous contract and the current one. So, as for, as for the past vendor, it was Bay State. And as you know, we have a rule with the city, that if we don't pay a bill in the year that it was incurred, you have to go through a bad bill process. So, unfortunately, the bill was being sent to an employee that was not finance-related, and so, we had no idea that it wasn't being paid. Since then, I think I've explained this, that we've now implemented something on our purchase orders, where we say all bills should be sent directly to accounts payable at Lowell.K12, so that we avoid these issues where it's sent to an employee, not the accounts payable office. So, Bay State has since been approved by the city council to get paid, so we would be free to use them in the future if we chose. As for the Essentria contract that just got approved last night, as I briefly explained last meeting, we, we put in for that in July. So, there's many steps to the contract process that take weeks. If tomorrow, if we get a contract request from one of the chiefs tomorrow, I have to wait two weeks before law will even look at it, because we have to wait for the permission to enter process. So, then, we wait those two weeks, and then it goes to law, and it could sit there. I have a spreadsheet that tracks the timing. For this particular language contract, we sent it over July nineteenth. And when we sent it over to, on July nineteenth, we heard back, we got it back from law September twenty-second. So, it's, it was in law, under review for over two months. When it, when we received it on September twenty-second, we sent it out, and we did not receive it back until October twenty-second. And I'm using these dates, I could be one day off, so I, you can get that, and you know, like I would have that data in front of me at the next meeting that we do have. But that's just a quick illustration of, it took two weeks before it could go through the permission to enter. Then it took two, two-plus months in the law department. Then it came back, and it went to the vendor for three weeks. And then, when it came back, it had to go to City Hall, and it had to get approved in the purchasing department, the auditing department, the city managers department, then back to law. So, this is a good example of how it is out of our control, and it is so imperative that we do meet with the law department, because the process is one that we all probably inherited. But if we did things like electronic signature, where vendors can sign, and we don't have to sit there and wait for it to be mailed, or for all of the department heads here in the city, if we're all signing it electronically, rather than one department at six there a week at a time. So, I love the idea of meeting with the law department and finding a process that could work for all of us, because unfortunately, this is what we face all the time, with contracts and services that are necessary, but we can't move ahead, because otherwise, I'm going to start a bad bill, right? If I do something without the contract or the law department helping me get that contract, then we face issues where we don't offer translation services. So, I guess this is my way of saying, we're between a rock and a hard place, and hopefully, the meeting will, you know, result in some working together to move forward.
Yeah, I think, I just want to say, I think it's difficult to hear that, that we are really working hard to be in compliance, and we are technically out of compliance because of delays, significant delays within the law department and, and other city offices. It definitely sounds like a more efficient process can be found. And I'm wondering, have we rescheduled that meeting? Is there a plan? Because I think the last, the last two have been canceled.
I believe it was only one that was canceled. I think what happened is, when there was one that had to get rescheduled due to a legal obligation that the solicitor had, when we suggested another date, she'd never had the chance to approve that date. So, it wasn't, we scheduled it without her approval. But no, I'm not sure if we have, was it, maybe it's the eighteenth?
I believe we're, we're planning to reschedule it at this point, but I don't have any specific dates.
Okay. Not yet.
Yes, I'm glad to hear that it's been signed at this point, and we can really start to provide the services that are required. But I do, it's disheartening to know that, really, this process started in July, and we're now in November, and, and unfortunately, not providing the very necessary services to our students. So, thank you for giving us that explanation.
Ms. Martin, then Mr. DeCotto.
Thank you very much. I'm just curious, how long was it that we had worked with Bay State?
I'm not sure. I believe it was a couple of years. I think that it was a good amount of time.
And so, now, we're moving forward with this, this new company because of the bad bill situation?
That's what caused us to pursue another option, yes, but we are able, if we wanted to, to utilize both, or to go back. I mean, we just wouldn't want to go through the lengthy, the only dilemma with doing that right now is if it takes X amount of time, which I'm going to be able to show. Like I said, I, the one thing about an accountant is we're good record keepers. We do paper trails, right? So, I have a good paper trail showing the length of time it takes to go through every contract. And so, my concern would be, is if we went back to Bay State, which I heard that they had a great reputation with us, but if we went back, how long would that contract take to go through, you know, that process to go back through that? That's the only concern at this time. So, we could use both in the meantime.
And do we have any kind of qualitative opinion on the two?
I can say that Essentria, we, I think, I do believe they're on the state contract, and I don't have that information in front of me, but, which means they've been vetted by them, I believe, so.
I'm just curious, because I mean, I was aware of Bay State for many, many years as our translation service. I understand that we basically didn't pay a bill, and so, we were not able to use their services any longer, which is what prompted this whole situation. So, I do think that we should be particularly aware, as we're moving forward with a new company, to be clear about what the level of quality is. Again, now that it's been signed, you know, that we can at least move forward with that. But I do think this problem dates back further than July, when we realized that we could no longer use the service we'd used for years, and had to scramble to find a new service. So, I think looking to find solutions on both sides is a great process for us to go through. But again, we'll, we'll be waiting to set that date. Thank you. Yep. Ms. Turner?
Just so you know, we can, we definitely have the flexibility. No, we didn't, we don't have a commitment to Essentria, let's say, right? We do have the, we do have the flexibility, if we so chose, if we were committed to Bay State, to work, to open, go through the same process, use Essentria while we can. There's no, we're not committed. Essentria is not something, you know, let's say if we choose a vendor that we know we need, because they're the ones that provided a curriculum, and so, they're the perfect person to provide the professional development, so we're committed to that. We're not committed, in this case, to Essentria. We have no, you know, like, no commitment to them. So, we can go back to Bay State, if that's something we feel comfortable with, we have no problems with that.
Mr. DeCotto?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think there's a certain level of urgency to a lot of these issues with our contracts, that we're not able to provide a lot of services that we need to provide our kids going forward. And I, I would think that it would be probably who, the mayor, or the superintendent, or both, to set up a meeting with the people involved, such as the city manager, the city solicitor, and, and any other person that has to approve any of these contracts. This, this, this has to be addressed, and not be constantly pushed off, and pushed off, and pushed off. I think that we have to attend to this and solve it. There's got to be a better way than the way it is right now, because we are really struggling to get things done in an expeditious manner. Truly. Thank you.
Thank you. So, just for my own advocacy, I mean, I've only been mayor for this term, but, so you're saying, like, contracts go over in July, and they don't come back until September? But was this a problem, I mean, with the history here? Has this been going on for ten years? I mean, what, what, all of a sudden now, it seems like we can't get contracts approved. So, Ms. Turner?
I have to say that the one thing that we're committed with, committed to, is working together with the city. I believe that you, when I first started, there was a lot of discussion on rebuilding relationships with the city. So, I've gone out of my way to make sure I've built one with the city CFO, city auditing, city payroll. Trying to do that same thing with law. This is not me trying to say that law is taking too long. I'm not the expert in law. If it does indeed take that long to review a contract, so be it. What I am doing is emailing, texting, asking constantly if we could start to meet regularly. So, I'm not, when I, when we do have that meeting, it is not my intent to say law is wrong, and I am right, law is slow, and I am fast. It's about, can we please meet? Can we please do something like electronic signature? Can we do something with a contract management system where there's accountability, that shows that we submitted the contract in July, and we did not get it back until now? That's not to say it wasn't, that that time wasn't necessary for them to do what they have to do. And it's not to say that we don't sometimes submit a contract, like the solicitor explained to the city manager, that we might give a contract and want it turned around by tomorrow. Absolutely, there are conflicting laws, like there's the DCF laws and the homeless laws, where there are children placed, and then we'll get billed for a child that we never met for two months back. I can't control that. We cannot control those issues. We cannot control if there is a need for something, and we have to send it over and ask for, like, we don't have the athletic trainer contract yet. We've sent that over. Sometimes, when we send it over, we don't know, as non-lawyers, that there's something missing or something necessary. That's why the law department is there to protect us. So, when they send it back to us and say, oh, we need this, we, we move quickly to get what they need, and we send it back, and we track that data, too. The one thing I can say is, there's a system we have called Barracuda. Barracuda is an email tracking system that tracks all the emails. So, what I did to make, confirm that we were doing everything we possibly could, is I've had my, the tech people do a search for all of our emails sent to the law department, and we send law, the law department emails weekly almost, saying, please give us an update. Are we missing anything? We thought we answered all your questions. What is, are we missing anything? So, the solution that I can say is, if the solicitor and I met regularly, which is not me pointing a finger, it's just saying, can we meet? If we met, then we would both be on the same page, so I would know if there's something lacking in my department. At this point in time, I don't know why it's changing now, maybe they're understaffed. I can say in this defense, that just like our departments, we've had a lot of influx of money, so I'm sure that's happening across the city. If they're getting grants and programs and all of that, those things have to flow through the law department, too. So, maybe all the extra money is causing them to have the same problem that we have, which is more, more need, but less people. So, that's my answer.
Just, I mean, again, I can't speak for last year or the year before, but, I don't know. Ms. Doherty?
Thank you. I really don't want to go into the weeds on this, because we...
Thank you. I really don't want to go into the weeds on this because we don't have the city representatives here. But I, I'm thinking of it, clearly there can be room for improvement on both sides in streamlining. I know, I think they already do electronic signature on their side. So it'd be an easy thing for us to be implementing some of these process improvements. But I also, and I, I hark back to the students that weren't enrolled, you know, that were late enrolled, and what the nurses told me about getting reports that didn't have the immunization information, or didn't have immunization information translated, or didn't have the correct person's immuni- I think we're sending these contract requests over that don't have all the information that the law department needs. Maybe the vendor's name is different, or the, or the cost, this new translating service is quite a bit more expensive than Bay State. Maybe it wasn't originally on the preferred list. I don't know all the glitches. So I think there is shared responsibility in terms of how do we do it better. But it does, as you're saying, from my perspective, my historic perspective, I think it always could have been improved. The relationships always could have been improved. But we seem to be at a crossroads here where we've really hit some walls in terms of being able to efficiently manage our operations, you know? And it is impacting, as we know, we got a report September 23rd, the 394 students were not attending school. Or we know we're not providing translation service for 152 special education students, or translations for immunizations that need to be done so kids can be in school. It's having a severe impact on, I, I think, our most vulnerable families. So I think that it does behoove us, as Ms. Clark said, to try to get this straightened out sooner the better. And one meeting is not going to do it, but I thought by starting with Ms. Martin's finance group, we get a chance to kind of get some of this stuff out, air it, and, and talk about a system going forward that's going to work for both the city and the schools. And so that's, I, like I said, I don't think it's fair to dig deeper. We did get those emails, but we haven't had a chance to actually meet. And I think we should, it's better to do it at that time. And I know Ms. Martin is committed to polling the subcommittee again and the city stakeholders to find a date that's going to work, that makes the most sense. And, and then we can really hash out some of it. But I think there's room for improvement on both sides. Thank you.
Sure. Ms. Turner?
I think that that's where we're in agreement. And that's where the problem is. If I'm asking to improve, so I reach out and I don't get a response, that's where the problem is. And as you just mentioned, some clear examples of a vendor changing their name, and so the name has changed, those are not things that were reflections on the school department. Those are reflections on the vendor. And I want to point out that I'm so willing to learn because the law doesn't necessarily change, but the law department's views sometimes do. So for instance, if Mike Lovato was given a contract in 1920, but in 2021 they decided not to give him a contract, how would I know that they were going to decide not to do it the following year? When they gave one parent a contract to transport their children and that, um, parent has been transporting their child for a while, and then all of a sudden this year they decided, we're not doing it with a commercial liability, which is not what any of the other districts are doing. So my point to you is, you and I 100% agree with each other. I need the law department because I don't understand when and why they're going to change or, you know, choose to give a contract or choose not to give a contract. So if I can meet with them, that's the, I would count that as a, a success on my part. So as far as improvements on both ends, absolutely, we're willing to work on ours. We know we're not the lawyers. We, we respect our expertise. But again, I'm an expert in record keeping and true paper trails. And so I have all the paper trails to show that we did indeed request several times to meet. So this would be an accomplishment on our part. So thank you for helping me with that.
And I just want to add that, you know, this sounds, to me, I'm, I'm, you know, astonished to be standing up here. And I, and again, there's nobody here from the city to defend themselves. I got to take you at your word, what you're saying. But I'm, I'm embarrassed to be here with all these pending, you know, cases and we're fighting over contracts. So we got to get to the bottom of this. So we should set up something definitely for next week and make sure we go over this. I mean, this is embarrassing.
Could I suggest one other thing? I think that, as you said, it's, you, I'm not attacking, like I said, I could sit here and say many, like, I can counter everything that was in the, the response that the solicitor shared. But I don't think it should be a back and forth. So I didn't even bother to do that. I'm already saying to you that it would be successful on my end if I can just get her to meet with me. But what I can suggest is, you know what, if it would make everyone feel better so that it doesn't happen in the future, maybe we should do more accountability. Meaning, maybe I can bring a report to you every month like the personnel committee does. Maybe if I show you every month, here's the number of open contracts, here's when we sent it over, and then when you see that four months later it's still sitting there, maybe then you could get involved. I have no problem with that. See, I don't mind, I don't, I, I don't mind being accountable.
So I think next week we'll, next week we'll get to the bottom of this. We got to set up a meeting, make sure this happens. Again, there's nobody here from the city side. So let's get to the bottom of this by next week.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I could, just to, because I do appreciate your, your comment, your understanding, just to emphasize, we have an extraordinary working relationship with the manager's office and across with City Hall. It's an extraordinary partnership. The assumption here is if it's taking longer within the law department, then that means it was a complex legal analysis. And there is not a way to forecast, I don't think, on the finance department's end how lengthy or how complex the legal review is going to require. Just like on, just like from my office, I, I rely on our chief financial officer to conduct the financial analysis. And I trust in her expertise on how long that financial analysis is going to require. So I don't want you to leave tonight, Mr. Mayor, thinking that there's a breakdown in the relationships. There's a, there's an extraordinary relationship and a bridge between the school district and City Hall. And this is just part of that working relationship to ensure that we have things right, so that we can make sure that they're right for the committee and minimize and mitigate any type of liability going forward.
Okay. It's just, I, I've been through this and I know how stressful it can be for parents and the students, especially as they, as they get older into their school career. It is extremely stressful. And I just want to make sure, you know, on one other part, like where we say we can't get confirmation of signatures, are we still following the rule where we, are we mailing out emails and, and doing letters to them, like biweekly or something? Or how does that work, Ms. Desmond?
Yes. So we are sending out letters, but as I mentioned, the, we hired a parent advocate who is also following up with a phone call. And then all of our special education district staff, school psychologists, ETCs, speech and language pathologists, social workers, they all work extraordinarily hard to reach out to families and, and work with the school personnel to make sure their scheduling, assessments, and also meetings with families. So that's happening on all, all ends.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions on this? All right. Nine, two then, the communication, the Office of Education Equity Community Empowerment Regarding School Assignment Data. Any questions on that communication? This is Dakota, do you have? No, yes.
I'm sorry, are you, are you talking about the school assignment update? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, it says school assignment update.
I did have a question on that. Do we have any projected time or have we already received the Afghani refugees? Are we expecting them or are they here already?
Ms. Phillips?
Mr. Mayor, school community members, we did have one family arrive. They have not been registered with the district. That's being coordinated with the International Institute.
Do, do you happen to have an idea? Have they given you an idea of how many we can expect?
We know that we're going to receive a number of students in Massachusetts and in our greater Lowell area. We do not have any reporting on what number we can expect in Lowell.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions on this? I just quickly had a question about the, so when we say that their students are assigned to school, that doesn't necessarily mean that they're in a seat in the classroom?
That's, that's correct, Mr. Mayor. There is certain exclusions from schools. One of those being, as you see within this report, immunization compliance. And I think within this context, it's important to clarify, this does not in any way relate to COVID-19. These are the standard immunizations that are required for school enrollment. There are certain exclusions within both the law, as well as then reinforced within school district policy. So youngsters who don't meet the requirements of immunizations are excluded from school. So you will see that number show up continuously throughout the course of the school year. And you see that show up here as well. Part of the work here was to assign them to schools so that the resources at the schools can help connect the families to those immunization services.
All right. And who, who's tracking down the medical? Is it just the health department? Or is it the school nurse? Or is it?
So part of the opportunity here with assigning them to schools, even though the family was notified that immunizations aren't, their immunizations aren't up to date and compliant in order for them to attend school, does connect them to the resources at the school, the principals, the social workers, and the school staff to help connect them to immunization clinics and opportunities to receive those immunizations. And they also get continuous school, school communication. For further information, I would, Mr. Skinner, do you have any greater detail on that communication and how that communication is working?
And, and one other question. So is there like a cutoff if we send a letter and we say you're not, your shot, your immunization report is not complete? Are we out of compliance if we let them stay at home for 20, 30 days, something like that?
Yeah, if I, if I could, the expectation, there's compulsory education requirements in the state of Massachusetts. The, however, in this case, the expectation and the accountability does fall on the family to get these immunizations complete. But it is a partnership. Our expectation is for the kids to be in school. The law requires them to be in school. However, the law does exclude them from school and school district policy without the immunizations. So it's a partnership with the families. The question that you bring up in terms of compliance, it, it goes both ways. Yes, a student would technically be truant from school and it's a compulsory school attendance requirement. However, they are excluded from school and only the family can pursue and, and get those immunizations or the waivers that are allowed for certain exemptions.
Okay. Did you have anything to add, Mr. Skinner, or?
I think the superintendent explained it quite well. There is a conflict between state law that requires a child to go to school and also the state requirement that a child be immunized. So the onus falls on the parent to get the immunization records up to date. What I can add is that at the schools, social workers at schools, administrators at schools, even teachers are working hard to collaborate with families to get them appointments. But I do know that in many cases, appointments are booked out through about January. And so even when people help families to try and make appointments, the appointments aren't there to be got.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Arnie?
I don't know. I, I found this report so confusing. I apologize if it's me. I thought we were getting a status update on the 394 students at the September 23rd meeting. So if I, just for, if I'm right, tell me. So in terms of this report, out of those 394, which then changed to 393, 112 were identified on October 1st that they were medically non-compliant. They didn't have the immunizations. But now 97 of those are attending school. Is that correct? So only three are waiting for the immunizations. As Mr. Skinner just mentioned, some of them having to wait months. And I, I understand. I tried to make an eye appointment and it's next year. Is there, so I, so those three are going to be a problem for us because they don't have the required immunization. So what happened to the other? If we take 112 off of 393, what happened to those other students? Are they all attending now? And, and there was, so let me just be specific. On page two, chart two, you ask, you have, 100 students are pre-K and EC, which is early childhood. How many of them are pre-K and how many of them are early childhood? Because there's a difference in pre-K, right? Pre-K is a lottery system. Not everybody gets a seat. But early childhood, I thought, was we're required to have seats for children who have special education needs or, can somebody clarify that for me?
Do you have a superintendent?
Yeah. Ms. Desmond, can you provide the clarification?
Actually, I can provide the clarification.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips.
So as I, I mentioned at the prior meeting, that number included students who were waiting for a full-time seat. So we never had 100 students waiting, pre-K and, and early childhood students waiting for a seat. We actually only had, you know, what is it, 30, 30 students who were waiting for placement. And I had clarified that, that that 394, 393 number was not students waiting for a seat.
So of the 393, how many of them are not attending school today?
We have three students.
Three students and they're, because they don't have their immunization compliant?
Yes, that's correct.
So everybody else has a seat?
Yes, that's correct.
Excellent. Thank you. And then my final question is when we looked at the breakdown by schools, I noticed not all the schools are listed, like the Daily is not listed. So is that because that school did not get any students?
So I'll have to double check that, but that would be my assumption.
Right. So here, here's my concern. And again, we're looking at our most vulnerable students, right? Many of these students came in with, they had to have their immunizations translated. There was some reason that they were delayed. You had, the Merklin got 38 of these students. The Lincoln got 24. The Pine got one. I'm assuming the Daily got none and whatever other schools aren't listed here, got none. So how is that fair to those schools and to the, you know, you had all these students coming in. I, I, there was a delay, as we know, because schools started in August. And this report was in September 23. They hadn't been enrolled yet. So those schools are going to be marked as having chronically absent students in high numbers. So I'm just wondering how the dispersion of the students was determined. What was the methodology that gave the Merklin 38 students and the Pine Arts one?
Ms. Phillips?
So it's based on seats that are available first. And then it's based on where the family moves. So we do have a zone, zone two, where we have more students and families living. Often that's tied to available housing and affordable housing. And so that, that's why you will see student, students in zone two being placed versus zone one. We don't provide transportation across zones. So that's one reason why some schools get more students than others. Families also seek transportation as a reason for selecting a school. And so if transportation is required, that often reflects in the, the schools that have citywide transportation. And then in some cases, if a family needs a certain bell schedule due to their, their work situation, that also determines where a student is placed.
But would you say it was primarily because of where they had space? Because these are all last minute enrollments?
Okay. That's correct. Where there's space and where the family lives.
Thank you.
Ms. Clark?
So this year, we put in a new school assignment policy for kindergarten, correct? So in the future, would you say we very likely would have a more even distribution of students who are enrolling late because of the way schools are now assigned or students are now assigned to schools? Would that be a, a correct assumption or a possible, a possibility in the future? Because my understanding is, is this year, were we going around and instead of putting, filling, filling seats at the schools based on, in each of those lotteries, it was going evenly across school assignments, right? So we're building one kid in each class as the summer moves on. So is it safe to assume that there would be seats in classrooms available kind of across the district, different from what it looks like this year in, in future years? Or is that maybe not an accurate statement?
Ms. Phillips, do you have any further details for the, any?
I'm not sure if I completely understand the question. But as relates to the lottery that we put into place to try to ensure that students who registered late had access to some of the schools that were in high demand, this year we only had one lottery school. That was the Pine Arts. And so we were placing students as they came once a month. And then after the school year ends, it is typical that based on where parents live, again, often- again, often it's tied to the affordable housing and also tied to transportation. That, that really determines where we place students.
Any other questions?
So you'll note with Pine Arts, as you mentioned, there was one student placed there, but through the lottery system, typically the class gets full by the first day of school and there wouldn't be space remaining for any additional students. And that would be the case for the other grades, first through eighth grades. There is a sub-separate program and that probably accounts for a student being added after the school year.
Thank you. I think it's helpful to hear that there are some other factors that are really out of our control that may be attributing to some of these disproportionate school assignments after the start of the school year. And what you mentioned, the affordable housing specifically in zone two, correct? And also bell schedule and transportation. So some of this seems to be, you know, just part of what we're dealing with and, and part of meeting the family's needs. Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions on the report? So just a motion to place the communication on file by Mr. Dillon, seconded by Mr. Dakota. All those in favor? All right, anything else? Motion adjourned by Mr. Dillon, seconded by Ms. Darney. Thank you. Thank you.